All right, guys, we'd like to call this board meeting to order for Tuesday, to order for Tuesday, September the 24th. Roll call, please.
Mr. Ballard.
Here.
Ms. Nazario.
Here.
Ms. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Sturgill here, and Mr. Williams?
Here.
All right, the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Recognition of visitors, seeing none. First hearing of the public, please. Sounds like you're getting yourself together, so I will hold. This one's gonna move pretty fast.
Bambi Dillon, 228 Delaware Avenue, Lorraine. Two things, one to Steve. How come when your meetings are canceled, the public's not informed? I know that everybody's busy, I'm busy, and when I make arrangements to try to go to something and then it's not there and no one says anything, I think it's rude. So I was just wondering why we don't know about it.
To answer your question, that would be the chairperson that would need to signify the, I mean, I let as many people, kind of through social media and whatnot, know that it was canceled and told as many people as I could tell, but that's something that you have to refer to.
Could I give you my email address so you could?
Absolutely.
Okay, I will.
Yeah, wanna?
I don't care, it's goeslovac@centrytell.net.
How about I get it after the meeting and then I will make sure if that ever happens again?
Everybody can know, but I just think it's rude.
Yeah.
You know?
And I apologize for that.
Yeah, I know, it's not your fault, but at least you can let.
Do you all post your meetings on the website for the schools? Not that anybody?
I'm not sure they're po, I know that we get, like, an email from Elena when those are canceled, like, that's how I was officially informed that it was canceled.
Mm-hmm.
Through an email, so.
Because, and I'll say, in no defense of anyone, but.
Please.
I believe it was canceled around 11 or o'clock or so that day before, so it would be too late to get it out in the newspaper. I don't know if they could put it on the signal that we get phone calls when some of the emergencies happening at the school, maybe they could call that way, maybe that's the suggestion. I'm not sure how they would go about getting that information out if you're not on social media a lot or that kind of thing.
It was, I believe, it was, like, I mean, it wasn't, like, the night before, so it would not have been able to be in the newspaper.
Yeah, they didn't have 24-hour cycle to do that.
It was a late morning type of.
Yeah, it would be nice if you gave them more of a notice.
That would.
I mean, that's only, like, what, eight hours' notice or seven, whatever?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
It is rude. You tell them I says rude.
I think all of Lorraine County just heard you.
I think he's heard that a couple times, but.
Okay, whoever's listening is rude.
And I actually know that he did receive an email from a concerned citizen that was shared with all of us that said something, pretty much to your effect, so I think he, as a chairperson, is aware of that, doing a better job of communicating.
Okay, 'cause I always try to attend, you know, meetings, so. And then, this is for Mark and the board. Okay, so what's happening with this levy? I know we have, it's an issue 13.
Yes.
It's a renewal.
Yes.
What is, no one's asked and said, "Okay, levy, Citizens for Lorraine Schools Levy Committee, please go forth with it," 'cause we do as a pleasure of the board. So I'd like to know what the pleasure is, yes or no, you know, are we supposed to do something? I know that back a few months ago or whatever, you guys had decided, yes, we're going to start the procedure, but you have a right at a certain time to take it off the levy, I mean, off the petition or whatever. I would just like to know, this is September 24th now?
Yes.
And it's November, whatever, date 6th or whatever.
And though I haven't said it directly to you, I think I said it on the microphone at our earlier meeting, we are full steam ahead, and so if that means, yes, please go forth with all the, the energy that you would normally go forth with in any levy. We are supporting the levy, we want this levy to pass, and we have, I know we, it was on, kind of, a shaky ground there for a while.
Yes.
But based on information that has now been shared, but then most people, I guess, have know what I'm referring to, well, the levy did not get pulled, out of line. We were, we had an issue that we were talking about concerning pulling the levy.
Mm-hmm.
But that has been resolved and we're moving forward with the levy.
Huh. Okay, so, we usually have two members of the school board that helps on the levy committee because anymore would be considered a meeting. So usually, Bill.
You're saying Bill and who else?
Yeah, well, usually Bill Sturgill.
Correct.
He's worked on the committee as long as I've been doing the levies, so I would think Bill for sure, so we wouldn't need another representative. And then, usually, the administration helps.
And.
So am I to approach Mr. Hardy and his administration and find out who, usually the treasurer is a big part of it.
So just for a little more detailed, kind of, things I'm referring to, as you know, Josh Hill, we had the court situation that we were going through, and one of the mainstays that we needed from Josh was to help us through our levy process, so he will be available to you through the levy process. Josh Hill is a definite, that is very clear. I would recommend, yes, to go through Mr. Hardy and the administration to get all the support that we can from them as well, please.
Okay, and then usually we have the teacher's support.
Yes.
So I will contact Jay.
And I will say publicly, we need all the support from the entire community to make this happen.
So Rich from the Journal is here.
Rich.
So Rich, could that be the headlines for tomorrow's paper?
And Carissa, we need all the support we can from this community to pass our levy.
Yeah, because, obviously, since there's so much negativity that's been put forth for the past couple years, it is gonna be hard to pass this renewal, which it shouldn't be.
But we're excited about some of the things that are going on.
But I'm sure it will be, so you guys need to step it up and rev it up, I guess, and start saying why we should pass the levy.
As I looked to my right and see Tim biting.
Yeah, he looks like, he looks like he's gonna throw up over there, I don't know.
I will open the floor to you, sir.
So we have to consider some strategic things, probably going to have to look at using some kind of, and I know our resources are limited, and so I guess we need to sit down and talk strategy on the resources that we can commit. Do we engage some kind of firm? We've gotta get, we have to get an assessment of where the community is at. We know there's a whole lot of dissension, a whole lot of, there's a lot of pieces out there, so passing the levy is essential. Putting a renewal on, which we've done, and dropping a renewal might be worse than not putting it on. So I think part of what we have to do is we've gotta get an idea of where the yeses are, where the nos are, and then what messages we need to do. So we probably need to have some kind of a survey, because, again, that's the assessment. We know we have some folks who are always gonna be yes, some folks who are always gonna be no, no matter what, right?
Mm-hmm.
Then we have this situation, so we need to find out, you know, the lay of the land, kind of, and I don't know who it is that can do that, but I think that assistance, that technical assistance would be very important, and that's going to dictate, I think, finances a little bit, too. Just so we have an idea of where do we, what part of our constituency do we need to be hitting hard, and what is the exact message that needs to be out there? I think we have some ideas of messaging, you have some ideas, but we probably need some professional folks to say, "Okay, your ideas of messaging make sense to you, but it doesn't make sense to the population that you have to convince." So I don't know what that answer is, 'cause I'm not, I'm not that savvy in that area, and you have much more experience, you may, but I think we've found in the past, sometimes the professionals won't give us much assistance at all, right? They just try to get in the way.
The last time we paid the firm, they did nothing different, they did, they were directing us to do everything that we've done in the past, and it was a waste of, like, thirty-some thousand dollars. And then how they operate, too, is they see what kind of money you have and they'll help you to that point.
Right.
And then after that point, then you've gotta earn more money.
I don't necessarily affirm that runs our campaign or runs us in our campaign, but someone who does at least a polling.
Well, we did a polling the last time and we used Oberlin College, and it didn't cost us anything.
That might be.
And that might be a route to go again.
So there's certain questions that need to be asked, and we need to get some kind of a cross-section perspective.
Right.
And then that's gonna help drive our strategies, 'cause right now, we know we can't use our regular strategy because we're much further behind our timeline than normal.
Way behind.
And we have a completely different, maybe, message.
Right.
Because it's a different scenario than we've never had.
Right.
So we've never, this is uncharted territory for us, so we might need a little bit of help.
Yeah, a big uphill battle compared to what we had before, but I think the key is that, the positive things that will be said by the board members and our unions.
Yes.
We have to have the support of the unions, that's key.
And I did get a call.
And I, pardon me, well, I.
I got a call on yesterday that I did point them in your direction from the Democratic Party.
Mm-hmm.
I think they're having an event on October the 3rd, I believe it's October the 3rd, and they wanted someone to come and talk about the levy, and I did give them your name because you're the face of our levy, so if you could reach out to Paul Adams, he's got a few questions that he'd like answered.
Generally, generally, what we've done in the past is we've put out for renewal, okay, is we've just put out, we just put out signs, that's all we did the last time.
Well.
Very different environment, though.
Yeah, well, that one year when we had a renewal and we used, they wanted, the board wanted to use a firm, we did a lot more than that.
Yeah.
You know, and I, I just felt that was, like, wasted money.
Yeah.
I feel the money that we have now is probably enough to put on a renewal campaign. And the way I feel, too, is I don't think that we have to do tons of mailers, 'cause I don't feel people read them. They just, they just throw them out.
Or the voters, anyway.
Right, so you do early voters and maybe the Saturday before. I always liked having that pep rally that we would always have with the band and the unions and that, and they, that was always, say, "We might have to do that this year, try to have that pep rally, to have that last punch, you know, to get the levy up there," so, I don't know, I'm always working, so I can do it in my sleep.
Great, look forward to it, and we'll, the board is on boards, we'll help any way we can.
Well, if.
Bill's gonna be one, we will talk to you about who the other one.
Who the other would be.
Actually officially on your committee.
Be appreciated.
Yes.
And then I'll contact the administration.
Please do.
Okay, that was it.
Thank you, thank you.
I like that answer.
About this, are we gonna finish letting the public about that? Yes, ma'am, please.
This was in the newspaper, and I wanted this to be officially in the board notes. It says, "The Lorraine County official list of voters is shorter due to a directive from the Ohio Secretary of State's office. On September the 12th, Lorraine County Board of Elections completed a purge of voters that wiped 6,395 names off the list of qualified electors. The purged list is all the voters who have had no activities and have not voted since 2015 and did not reply to a last chance notice since by mail July the 2nd. Anyone who suspects they may have been removed wrongly from the voters' list should call the election board." And I just wanted that information into our notes because that's going to make a big difference in our voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from, I'm sorry?
Where are you going with that? I had heard that, at one stage, and I thought maybe they did and I didn't get the memo, that they were aware, in terms of our precincts, who the purged individuals were, and they were gonna provide that information to precinct captains, did I?
That's true.
To actually, you know, because at precincts you have a limited number of people, and they were trying to get folks so that they could make sure those people were aware. And then with that, do you know what the deadline for them to re-register to vote is?
It says here, just to call the board office, and 532 voters got the purged list in Lorraine.
Okay, so I'll check in, awesome.
Okay.
I know that this time, it's October 7th. October 7th is the last day to register, because early voting starts on October 8th.
Okay, thank you for that.
Excellent.
On mic, just in case they can hear.
October 7?
October 7.
Is the last day to register the vote?
Mm-hmm.
Can I say one more thing?
It has, for something that Tim had said, and I've worked on a lot of campaigns and put out a lot of yard signs for people, and through the years, it's mostly people over 60 that vote, 'cause I could tell you on my right hand how many signs I put out to register voters that voted, you know, that, where we got the list from the Board of Elections of anybody under 60, and I had done all the east side and most of the west side, always for these people, and I was shocked to see how many young people don't go out to vote. So if we go out and try to get registered voters again.
Oh, no, 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 I was just saying that, what I was saying is, I, we, precinct captains were to be given the names.
Yeah.
Of people in their precinct, so some of those folks are, were regular voters or not, but these aren't, these wouldn't be anyone who's a new registered voter.
Okay.
So this isn't, this isn't new voter registration, but I think what happens is if you get purged, you have to go through the process all over again.
Right.
So you could've been voting for the last 15 years and not taken the last four years off.
Right.
Which is kind of odd and rare.
Right, but I'm just saying that a lot of times, the Citizens for Lorraine Schools go into the schools, go to the sporting events, we just have to make sure that if we get people to sign up to vote, we tell them how serious it is for them to go out to vote, not just sign up because we're there and they don't want to tell us no.
Right.
You know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can go to It Takes a Village to Tackle Hospital 70 for more voting information. We have links, you can actually register or update your address online, or, and you can get your, the early voting information and all of that, so just a plug for us.
Thank you, thank you for doing that.
Couple questions. Mr. Cawthon, is, has the ADC meeting been rescheduled?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Mr. Ballard, President Ballard.
Yes.
There has, there was an incident where a safety compliance officer, an attendance truancy officer handcuffed a kid. We know that it happened, we saw the statement from the school, it was in the paper. I heard that he did not get fired, he's being reassigned. Do you know or can you confirm that it is against board policy or not a policy to handcuff a kid for attendance issues, nonviolent, was not hurting anyone, was not a danger to himself?
I would have to research the board policy on that particular issue unless any of my other board members may have that answer. I will try to get that answer to you, to give you the specific language of the board policy.
I don't know what the number is, but we do have a policy that has to do with child restraint, and that incident did not qualify under, at least as was reported, so we haven't gotten a direct report. I've not gotten anything from the administration saying specifically what it was, so based on what I've heard and based on what the reporting was, that incident would not have been covered under our restraint policy, nor would it be covered under law enforcement's policy on juveniles. So he wasn't a law enforcement officer, so it's not like there's a protocol where they, you know, but under no circumstances would anyone have been arrested, detained in that regard, so no, that was a violation of the board policy.
Also, the handcuffs were not issued to him from the district. Handcuffs would be a weapon, he brought a weapon into the school and handcuffed a kid, and he's allowed to continue to work.
So I would, I'm never the kind of guy that hides behind no comment, but because some of the comments that you're making seems to be hedging into the legal realm, and I don't know where the issue or the incident is, I don't know if the parents have taken us into any other place, I can get you the board policy, I can't really weigh in on an opinion, I can hear the facts that you're sharing with me as you know them, but it's gonna, we're not gonna have much of a comment on that because, at the end of the day, we represent the school district. Now, we want all of our kids to be safe, but I don't want to walk down that legal road until I have. I'm able to give you the actual legal description of what our policy is, if that's fair.
No, but.
I think my counsel would say yes. And I'm gonna trust her.
I guess she would know better.
Yes.
As a parent, it doesn't feel comfortable.
I understand.
That's, that's where I'm coming from, as a parent.
And I respect that, I completely respect that.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anything else from the public? Seeing or hearing none? Approval of the minutes from September 24th, regular board meeting? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes?
Moving forward, reports, recommendation of the CEO, there's none, reports, recommendation, I'm sorry, we don't have anything from the treasurer? Do you have anything? Seeing none, going into new business. So I have gotten a couple of correspondence, and I know I've gotten even some emails from some of our board members of our meeting being a conflict with some of our athletic programs here in the district, and I do know that Bill has taken on a task of coaching, and he's been very clear that he is a board member first, so that would never conflict with what's going on, but if we could be accommodating to that schedule, it's been recommended that we consider changing our meeting dates to an alternate time other than Tuesday at 5:00 because of conflicts with what we have going on in our community sports. And wanted to at least bring it up for discussion to see if there were any opinion and if we could be accommodating to that. I know we usually set our schedules at the first part of the year when we have our organizational meeting, but because it's come up, I wanted to see what the pleasure was of the board. Any comments?
Is there, is there any objections to change?
I've not heard any objections, but I haven't called for the vote yet.
Typically, we were previously, we were on Mondays, it was like first and third Monday.
Yes. We were conflicting, though, with city council.
Right.
And our, our media people couldn't get to both places because they were sometimes clashing, and therefore, a while, things were pretty volatile between the city, the board, and everything that was going on with the school district, so I think it, things have kind of calmed down since then, but that is why we did make that change. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to step on your comment.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, it was, it was, I think, the only real accommodation, and it's, it's not that they're all important, the media is probably a significant one, and that they can't be two places at once. So then, what, what time are council meetings?
They're usually at 6:00.
6:00?
And the odd meetings are, what, 5:30 when they do the committee meetings, or are they both?
I think they start at 6:00.
Oh, okay, both of those, okay.
So.
And they're also the first and third Monday.
You might consider, in addition to the media, members of the public, if they're interested in being here.
Well, that's the thing, I've had people from the public who want to be on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I mean.
And one of the pleasures that we do is we do film and tape everything, so I guess, even if the media, they could see it on, on tape, and on issues where we would need, Mallory, she had to be at city council, if we needed to do special meetings and things like that to accommodate you in your office, we could always do that if it was a real media issue.
And I think that's, that's the key, is we have certain times where there is a real conflict, it's not a make-believe one, and we have the capacity to call in a special meeting to deal with that.
Mm-hmm.
I think, from my experience, the conflict has been few enough, or the need has been few enough, that it wouldn't warrant accommodating. We can always accommodate the exception, and the rule has been, it's not been a real conflict. I think, I think there's a real conflict, I remember being a volleyball parent, and I was Tuesday, Thursday's volleyball.
Basketball and those.
Yeah, basketball, so we've always avoided those. The challenges we had with Mondays, we used to hate because they're, whenever that holiday, like, whatever the holiday was, it would land on, on that Monday, and that would kick us out, but, and even with that, I think, for the most part, we've always been that first, third Monday.
Is that when city council is also the first and third Monday?
You guys, first and third or second and fourth?
I thought it was first and third, I can be correct.
I'll ask the media, is city council first and third or second and fourth? Do you guys know?
It's first and third, and then what?
Yeah.
So they meet every week? They, they meet every week, okay, very good. So committee is?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth.
So would we be better off on second and fourth? Because they can't do any votes down at city council on the second and fourth, if that's a conflict, would that make more sense for us?
I have a fourth conflict.
Well, so first and third it is, because we're gonna take your home first.
Yeah, we need to vote, yeah.
Yeah, so, I guess I need a.
First and third, correct.
I guess I would need a motion for us to consider moving our meetings to the first and third at 5:00 PM, and then setting a date to start that, so. I don't even, I guess, the first of, where do we, the first of October?
Yeah, 'cause we're at the last, this is our last meeting.
I mean, I guess we can go back and start our schedule, and we go to schedule our next meeting, we can do that, or, but I guess the consideration is going to, did we say first and third, or? I need a motion.
I, yeah, I can come back, my second and fourth, my fourth might go away.
Okay, okay.
So.
So I'm open to whatever the motion is.
So you're good with mine, first and third?
Yeah, but let's, let's go ahead with second and fourth, and then by the, it's a board that I'm on.
Okay, so.
That I had been strongly considering, not being on that board.
Well, I guess they know now.
Yeah, the special, the problem is I haven't talked to them about that yet.
No, you just did, so.
That is funny.
So we'll do the second and fourth.
Okay, I need that in a motion, please.
Motion for the second and fourth.
Of council, of changing the meeting date for school board.
For a regular meeting.
To Monday.
Is that 5:00 PM still?
5:00 PM.
Five, that's it.
So there is a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nazario?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes.
It has been changed. Do we have anything else in new business that we need to discuss?
And we need, we, not to interrupt you.
No.
But we had a motion, motion to change the meeting, and now, do you need the vote?
Call for the vote?
Now we need it.
Roll call. Thought we just did the roll call, but go, go for the roll call.
That was two separate issues, right?
Two separate.
All right, so.
Do another one.
Yeah, you need to.
Do, do another one.
So a motion to accept, then, right?
Okay, well, then we need.
You need one to put it on the floor and then you need a vote.
Now we need another motion and a second.
No, we, the first one, just put the issue on the floor.
To walk it on, right.
To present it for a vote, and now you need a second roll call to vote on it.
Okay.
So motion to.
We did that.
Move the meetings from, because we just basically put it on the floor.
Put it on the floor, yep.
So now the follow-up motion would be to set the first and fourth Monday.
To vote.
As our meeting date.
And Courtney, you have a second?
Yes, second.
Roll call.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Nazario?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Sturgill, yes.
Is there any other new business? Well, I'll just kind of give the briefing as best I know. First of all, I think this is our first meeting since we've gotten the official test results back from the state. And I'd say you guys know, we, you can't hear me?
First and, second and fourth Mondays.
At 5:00, yes. So, I was just saying, as you all know, we've gotten our state report card, and we've, our children have taken themselves to a D with the help of their teachers and their instructors, and for that, we should be very, very pleased. And I want to make sure we made mention of that. As a follow-up to what's going on in Columbus, as you all know, there was a state board of education meeting today that was scheduled, I think, for 4:00, and it has been canceled, as they are still trying to do their tweaks from House Bill 70 to 154 that came out of the House, to 154 that is now being in the Senate with, which is a whole different bill than the one that came from the House. And from what I'm understanding, they're having a difficult time getting cohesion, even to get out of their subcommittee, less known to their entire floor over there in the Senate. So, that has been canceled. It has not been rescheduled at this point. And I think they're trying to get the support of enough of their senators to get that at least to the floor, so they can then maybe get it to conference, so they can discuss between the two houses. I believe that there is such dissension between what's going on with public education in the state of Ohio, and because we now have a new governor who's not running with an iron fist, that people are actually able to vote their conscience and really say what they feel. And with that, it's really interesting to see how they're, these are sausage-making in, in Columbus to try to get to some level of concurrence. So, stay tuned to that. There, there were supposed to be some testimonies today. Those all got canceled. I know some of us are still doing our written testimonies to send, and we're still fighting that good fight. But there's no movement other than the Senate can't agree with themselves on what they want to do with House Bill 70 or 154. But they all still agree that the report cards are flawed, so, though we've done better, and of 14 of the districts that were up to go into this next phase of S, all improved to a D, so that's a good thing. And they're gonna continue to try to improve on the grade scale, and really figure out what they're trying to measure with the grade scale, because they all agree that we're not really measuring much based on the way the grade card is done. And that's been set across the board with everybody, so that's nothing new. But in the meantime, they keep trying to fix the punishment without really paying any attention to what really gets us there, which is a report card, which is the most important thing. But that's my update from there. I don't know if you guys have anything more that you've heard from what's going on at the state. Like I said, I spend quite a few days down in Columbus a week, and I'm on the phone quite a few hours when I'm home, working through that process. And there's a lot of things that are going on with ADCs, with takeovers, with the Senate, with what Joe Miller is doing with his bill, he and Mr. Jones, and really trying to get some things finished before they go in the lame duck at the end of the year, because as you know, there's some, one of the members of the subcommittee is retiring at the end of this month. And then, some of the other ones are term limited out going into next year. So, they're really trying, this is the hottest topic in Columbus right now. And Lorraine has made this a very, very hot topic in Columbus because of what has happened here. They're trying to fix it. They're trying to fix it. So, that's my update. Any updates or anything else from any of my other board members, please? I don't want to be the guy talking all the time.
Why not?
You have any comment, Bill, or good?
No, no, I'm, I'm...
And I, and I will add this, and this is not to be a wet blanket on anything, but I've gotten several calls about an issue going on. It's two things. We had, I guess, something that happened at the high school with a, I mean, at the football game, with a fight that has broken out. And from what I'm understanding, though we did leave our sidelines, our kids were not seen throwing any punches. So, I just want to make that, that, you know, if you see one of your teammates, and we call them family on football fields because we're all brothers, and you see your brother being attacked, it's hard to restrain yourself from going to his aid. And I get that as a formal football player, but I just appreciate the fact that our guys were not seen throwing punches or things like that. And I hope that we do get the grace that we need to complete our season in its entirety. And I really support our boys. And secondly, I've been receiving calls this week from veterans and military enthusiasts who have some concern about this conversation that's going on about the pledge of allegiance in our schools. I don't have the full detail than what I've read in the newspapers, so I don't want to make comment. But I do want them to know that I have received their calls, and those who I've talked to know that I've talked to them. And we support our military. We support our flag. We support our, our pledge. And I don't believe that anybody in our district don't support those things. So, I just want to make that official, that we know we're a very patriotic district, is the best that I have. I don't know if anybody else have had any of those calls.
Well, obviously, I mean, I, I sent you the, I sent everybody on, on the board, the Ohio revised code from the state. And the state from Ohio revised code said that you have to provide the opportunity for the pledge of allegiance. A person doesn't have to do it, but that, that we, that we have to provide the opportunity, and that if you didn't provide it as a whole school, that you couldn't interfere with the teacher in the classroom who wanted to have the pledge itself. I mean, you could, they could do it. They could do it individually. I would say I'm, I'm a, I'm a little disappointed because, like I said, I've, I've been to different countries, and they don't have freedoms like us. When you, when you go to, to communist countries, and you go to their airports, and they have people walking around with submachine guns, you feel a little bit threatened. I mean, I, I did. But, but you have to understand that only 1% of the, of the people in, in the United States actually go in the military, actually join it and, and serve the country. And, but out of that, a lot of people have, have given their lives, and I think it deserves the respect. You can choose to support it, non-support it, you know. I mean, I'm a little disappointed, but our policy, our board policy is we, we have it, okay?
That is correct.
Right, right now, we can't.
Enforce it.
Enforce our board policy, but if we could, I think at this point, we would. So...
You know, there's, there's what Ohio revised code says. There's our policy. And then, there's a certain level of common sense. We don't do the pledge because the Ohio revised code.
Forces us to do that.
Forces us to do it. It's unfortunate that we have to have a Ohio revised code that protects people's right to do it, privilege to do it. But as a district, you know, it's, it should not be a question. It shouldn't, I don't think should ever come to, well, if the Ohio revised code doesn't say we do it, we're not gonna do it.
You have to, right.
That's just, that is not on the table. And I think for a person, an administrator, and I don't, and I don't know all the details, but for someone to make that decision, and then enforce that, I could see where this could, CNN is interested. And we've seen the latest piece with the, I think, the two children who were arrested, the six-year-olds in Florida, and how off the chart that went.
Yes.
I'm glad that there hasn't been any real mainstream coverage of a district that, in essence, prohibited kids from saying the pledge. That would be, you know, I mean, it's hard to explain that kind of thing. It's hard to sit there and have the interview and say how that happened. So, whoever did that, and it shouldn't take board action to drive an apology. I'm, I'm believing that the person who did it had some intention in mind, and it probably wasn't to be disrespectful to the flag. I would just suggest that person, and I don't know, I mean, there's no, I don't know the legal parameters, but someone needs to say that, kind of like Coach Kitchens did, he kind of took, if you want to blame somebody, blame me. Well, whoever made that call, especially in leadership, in the part of leadership that they need exercises, step up and own it, and say it was a bad call, apologize, and we can move on. Because there are a lot of folks who are offended. And it's amazing what a sincere apology will do when people are offended.
And especially when you have an actual student, I'm JROTC, questioning it. We have that here. That's the part that I took as being the worst. An actual student questioned, and why wasn't he allowed to? We have a JROTC at our school. We should let them, I, I mean, they should be able to honor the flag.
In all kids. I mean, I...
All kids, of course.
I've never been in military.
Right, no, exactly. But since we do have...
But the flag is important to me, and these folks, and anybody. So, again, you're right. I think that there's definitely some range for adults to step up and, you know, and to hide behind something at this stage. It's way, way too late for that. So, that would be my recommendations, that someone present some kind of formal apology. And otherwise, I would say this, people's reputations behind that could take serious hits. It's tough.
Anything further from anyone? So, our next meeting will be?
Are you going with the second and the fourth, or we're moving it then?
Yeah.
So, then, it would be the seventh.
The seventh?
I lied. Second, or we're doing the first and third, second and fourth?
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth?
Yes.
Would be 14th.
I'm okay with that.
The second hearing of the public.
Oh, I thought I did, but second hearing of the, I, I, no, no, take your time. If I, if I went too fast, that's fine.
Summer Harvey, Skyline Drive. Mr. Coffin, has there been any conclusion as to what the evaluation will mean, as far as will it determine termination, employment, go down in the books as just another number? Has there been any discussion, or clarification, I should say, because like the day after it was, oh, well, maybe this, maybe that? So, has there been any clarification?
Since the last meeting, we have not had any further conversation in regards to what the ineffective evaluation will mean, as far as your question.
When you performed the evaluation, were you, was it with the understanding that it would be counted towards employment or termination?
I don't want to comment necessarily on termination discussions at this point, but, I mean, I think we all understand what the impact of an evaluation can have. But I, I don't want to necessarily speak for the entire commission or put anything out there specifically about termination at this time.
Okay, thank you. And real quick, for POs, unfortunately, we don't have Josh here to answer this, but I don't know if you'll know the answer to this. But in the past, if a staff member, like a teacher or whoever, put forth a PO to be processed from the treasurer, I guess, for whatever, how many people's hands did that go through? Like, was there one approval? Was it just the treasurer that had to sign off on that? Do you know the
I can ask someone who works in that office, if you don't mind. And there again, I'm...
Sorry, Eden.
Give me the question one more time.
If a teacher, if a teacher submits a PO, or a staff member, or even an administrator, if someone submits a PO, how many people have to approve that before it's final?
My best understanding is once a PO is received, it has to go down to the CEO to be signed off on. Is that is accurate?
Yeah.
Okay, then, help me.
So, everybody has a different?
Speaking to the machine, please.
So, there's a different process for if you're through the high school, or if you're specifically in my office. If you're at the high school level, it might have, you know, your building principal, and that goes for all buildings, so that they know what budgets are being tapped into in order for that purchase order to go through. Then, it does go through finance. And it's basically so that everybody knows where these budgets are pulling from, and in making sure that not just one person is approving an expenditure, so everybody's aware. So, it, I mean, it could be, it's roughly like four or five people, but there might be an extra step, like, other than, like, if I was put in a PO, I'm not going to go through a building, you know, administrator to approve my PO. Does that make sense?
It does. It's just been brought to our attention that POs are getting paid extremely late. There's a question if vendors are gonna continue to cooperate, and it's a little off-putting considering the situation we're in, especially with the levy and people, you know, screaming no against it when, in reality, we need this money. And they're like convoluting the process, it seems. I just, that's why I want clarification. I want to know, are they convoluting the process? Are there eight people that have to be, you know, that hands have to be put through before it's actually finalized? Are vendors pushing back and, and wanting a process done more speedily than it's being done? Are you aware of any of that?
I'm not aware of that, but I will, so we are working through our new, finding our, how we're gonna proceed in this treasurer's situation. So, this, this will bring up to Mr. Hardy and see if I can get you a better answer, or make sure that we're still on task. But I believe currently, we are still on the same task that we've always been in. And I don't know if there's certain vendors that are being checked or rechecked, or are there new vendors being added to the system. I don't have those answers, but I will try to find that out for you.
Okay. I just would hate for there to be a relationship burned over somebody, you know, taking their good old time, or not caring, or thinking that their, you know, their process is more important than the final result. That's all, that's why I brought it up. Thank you.
And I'm very confident in Josh Hill. And I believe if it's in his bellywicker and his control, nothing has changed. And I believe that he still runs his department that way. But if it's not that, I will let you know.
We changed the hours of our preschool program, so we are mandated to provide them a nutritional snack. The Scott Dieter, who's the administrator of that, is saying that we don't have money for this, and he's asking the teachers to ask parents for donations. Our school gets free breakfast and free lunch because our parents don't have a lot of funds. If parents do provide snack, how do we know that that is meeting the nutritional Is someone going to help? I know that there's extra funds through Mr. Hawks. One person said that they could use those funds to provide those snacks, and one person said they cannot.
So, this is preschool?
Yes, sir.
And they're not giving snacks. We change the times from what to what?
I don't, I don't know the, I don't have...
They go longer, like about a half hour longer. So, I think since it's that longer time, since they're there that longer time, they have to give them a snack.
And like our teachers have, you know, our teachers are amazing. So, they're purchasing snacks, or some parents are providing, but they should not have to do so. That's our responsibility. The school, you know, they, they made all of these changes without inputs from the parents or teachers. Parents didn't even know about the changes until school started.
I have made a note of that, and I will follow up on that.
Thank you.
Is there anything else? So, again, you said our next meeting is scheduled on the 14th, correct?
10:00.
At 5:00 here. Seeing none, or having no other statements? Is there anything for the good of the order, Mr. Coffin, that we need to know from you all?
It's been kind of all quiet on the western front, so we're waiting to hear from the chairperson about the next meeting, and hopefully some movement from Columbus as details are worked out. So...
Thank you.
It's like the western front or the eastern? I guess it'd be the southwestern front.
Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
I still move.
Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Ballard?
Yes.
Ms. Nazario?
Yes.
And Mr. Sturgill, yes.
You and I.
Meeting adjourned.
This has been a production of Lorraine City Schools TV20 WLCS.